Do we have not, do we not have something coming up on our screen? I turned it on. Oh, good Lord. You have.
I don't dare.
So.
So you don't know how to do the share thing for the screens? No big screen here.
What's that?
You have to do the share.
Oh, yeah. Totally unqualified to that.
(laughing).
You want me, yeah, you want me to start hitting things, hitting buttons?
Is it out of podium?
Strike a plug in.
Uh, projector slides or podium? Podium. The podium. Yep. There you go.
So we can see, we know people who are on their remote. Cool. If that's what you wanted, could I get it?
Yeah, I gotta sleep at night.
But I can't sleep at night.
All right, we're recording? Cameras are rolling? All right, call the meeting order, please rise and join us in the pledge. Bye-bye. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all for coming, uh, go ahead and call the roll.
Trustee Guyer.
Here.
Trustee Spurling.
Here.
Trustee Baumann. Trustee Youngerman.
Here.
Trustee Marisak.
Here.
Trustee Betsinger.
Here.
All right, we do have a quorum this evening, uh, thank you all for coming, uh, this evening, I'll move into the public comment period under public participation. This is the two-minute opportunity for any member of the public that is here, we'll start there, is there anybody in the audience, uh, that's not on the agenda elsewhere that wishes to address the board? All right, hearing none, uh, is there anybody on attending via Zoom that would like to make public comment at this period, at this time? If there is anybody? The only one on there is John Etheridge, so John. All right. All right, and then, uh, the last, um, and I guess I should state at the beginning of this, we are not really doing this remotely and in person per the governor's executive order, but we are continuing this on Zoom kind of as an added service to either petitioners and whatnot, and members of the public to attend virtually if they so choose. Uh, as part of that, um, we are required to accept public comment via email up until meeting time, uh, we did get an email at 6:37 PM this evening that I would like to read, uh, for the record, and, uh, and then we'll move on. Uh, this is from, uh, Atelia Nightingale, uh, from thirteen twenty Hickory Ridge Drive, uh, and Gary also. Gary Nightingale, uh, hello, I see on the Village Facebook page that we, you are advising the public of the dangers of fireworks and the penalties for blowing up fireworks. In our neighborhood, on every Fourth of July, there is an incredible amount of fireworks blown up. Some of these are actually loud and dangerous explosives. We generally don't see the police in the neighborhood on the Fourth. They're out answering other calls, we are writing to ask the police to be more visible and aggressive in driving through, patrolling neighborhoods, uh, hopefully driving through neighborhoods throughout the evening and night, uh, will serve as a deterrent and will reduce the number of fireworks. Thank you. Chief, you're on that. Thank you for the comment. And I do agree with that. Okay, if there's no other public comment, um, I'll go, uh, into the consent agenda, we do have a couple edits to make. We are going to be, uh, pulling item C from the consent agenda, that's the accounts payable, and that will be moved to, uh, items for separate action H. We'll discuss that at that time. And then the, uh, other edit is in J, uh, the Village President Emergency Succession Planning. In our conversations, uh, that I've had with all of you, uh, the, the succession planning got typed up wrong. It will go, um, Doug Marisak, Steve Youngerman, uh, Teresa Spurling, uh, essentially in order of seniority on, on this board. So if there's comments or you want to pull it, we certainly can, otherwise I would entertain the motion to approve the consent, uh, as stated with those edits.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Betsinger.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
All right, that carries five zero, thank you. Moving on to, uh, items for separate action this evening, we have ordinance eighteen, I'm sorry, nineteen eighteen, amending a special use in PUD from Montgomery Business Center, this is second reading. Mr. Philip Chuck, uh, they did talk about putting this on consent, but I wasn't at the meeting, so as a courtesy, we usually don't do that, put it on consent when we do have a board member missing. Uh, so it is on for second reading, uh, this evening, and, uh, I will turn it over to Steph if you have anything additional to add.
Um, nothing new, again, this is a PUD amendment for the Montgomery Business Center for Unit Two, that's located over at, um, Commerce and Alcat. So we have an amendment here that would allow some outdoor storage, uh, as well as some additional height on one of the particular lots, and does allow for some rearrangement of the, um, originally, uh, preliminary platted lots. So the lots are a little bit different now, different sizes than they were before. Um, other than that, nothing's changed since the last time you were here, um, the Plan Commission, Planning and Zoning Commission, I should say, did recommend approval, um, of the amendment.
And what was their vote, just a few call?
I believe it was five to two.
Okay.
All right, I have a question, if I may.
Mm-hmm.
It seems odd that we're doing a special use and we don't have a user. I don't recall ever having done a special use without a user applicant, so to speak.
Um, you have in the past, uh, the first one that comes to mind is Jericho and Orchard. Um, you approved the PUD out there, and part of that approved, um, a drive-through and some other uses that would have been special uses as part of that PUD process without any additional public hearings.
Is.
That one's fresh in my mind just because we're going through the process with them right now, too, so.
Is the, uh, the vote, because I was at the Plan Commission meeting, the vote was five to two.
Correct.
But at that time, I, as I understood, they were under the impression it was going to be seat crates or, or trucking, shipping containers, right?
That's one of the things that had been listed.
That may happen.
Mm-hmm.
Now, is, is the, the potential user that was going to be there, is that now a dead deal?
Uh, my understanding is that the contract has expired, but I can let the petitioner comment on that, I don't know the details.
John, you want to come up? Good to see you.
I'm sorry, hi, John Philip Chuck, I'm the attorney representing CB Commodities in this matter. Uh, the, uh, we had the purchasers of the two adjacent lots, uh, to the Home Depot storage facility there, uh, under contract. They went out of contract and they came back in contract, so that's why we decided, okay, currently they're not in contract, but we just didn't want to, given the past track record, just say, well, let's forget about it, and then they'd have to come back and start over if in fact there was interest in working on that site with Home Depot, so that's why we, we, we didn't want to pull it, we thought, let's, let's leave it. If, if they don't come back, well, then, there's nothing, nothing there, we'll put, put some other user on the lot, so. But if, if they were to come back, at least it would be ready to go, uh, for that, for that particular use, being as we've gone through the hearing process, et cetera.
I, I think, I've, I've been a board member now for eight years, and, and one of the issues that we had with another special use was a mulch company along, um, River Road, I believe it was, is, but we gave them a special use to, they could stack material so high, and within a year it was easily double that. And I think, I've heard from other board members, and I think some of their concerns are, what if it's a mulch company or something like that? And if we allow forty feet, can they stack mulch forty feet high? Can you, can you answer or, or maybe pacify some of their questions or concerns?
Well, the, the proposal that was before the village when we, uh, initially submitted was the fact that this was an adjunct to the Home Depot facility, it was going to be for the storage of, uh, trailers and, uh, and, and some trucks and then, uh, containers, uh, as they come and go with product, so that, that's the intent that we had, and that, that's what we would propose going forward, that just not anybody could come in there and, and store mulch, uh, whatever footage. So no, that, our, our point was to restrict it to those, that, that particular special use for that, that storage on that, on those two lots.
This special use says that, as we're looking at it today, would not prohibit that, correct?
Correct.
So this, if we were to allow the forty foot, it's forty foot of whatever basically comes into that particular lot.
Correct.
I am completely not okay with that.
Can, can we restrict what that special, what that height? Can we limit what can be stacked that high? You know, can, if we limit it to shipping crates and, and those sorts of items? Can we cater that special use to those sorts of things?
So maybe one question that, that I would have for staff is, under our current UDO, I understand that, that, um, folks could obtain a special use, I think it's a special use, for outdoor storage for up to eighteen feet tall.
Correct.
And would we, I guess, we probably would or could put restrictions on what type of material that was anyway. Now, to go up to forty, we could probably do the same thing, uh, and I'm not saying or speaking for anybody that we want to do that, it's just, and John, you probably aware of this, we never done forty feet tall of storage of anything before. I know we can say that the buildings next to it are taller than forty feet, that's true. But the way that this is worded is, is very broad to say trucking containers, you know, et cetera, et cetera, and for the storage of outdoor goods, materials, equipment, staging of any of the foregoing, so I mean, it, it's very broad. If you talked with the, with the property owner, uh, about that, I mean, how broad does it need to be?
As I said earlier, the, the whole point of us putting it in there is because we had a specific user when we started the process, and so that's why we were trying to accommodate them, uh, under the contract that we had. And unfortunately, it was actually the day before the public hearing, they, they went out of contract, and so, uh, we just, uh, decided that, well, let's not, that's, that's, let's not just throw it in the trash can, let's, let's, let's keep it in there, and because it's, it's very possible they could come to terms with Home Depot and, and be back in, uh, and under contract again. They haven't come back in yet, um, and, but, uh, obviously if, if they don't, we're going to be looking for other users for that property.
Yeah.
I don't think we'd have any, uh, issue, uh, if you want to clarify it, that, that the forty, forty foot would be in conjunction with the storage of metal, you know, containers, uh, for, you know, uh, transport type of, of, of containers. That would be an easy fix.
And one of my concerns in this area, and I, and I know that you're aware, is, um, you know, some of the adjacent users, not directly behind this, but to the northwest is the AU Sports Complex, it's far away, but forty feet is tall, and, and I think that that would be abundantly visible, no matter how much ivor greens that you plant, you're never going to get forty foot screened. And I guess the other question is, and pardon me if any of this, I don't think we discussed it here, but if Plan Commission got into it, is, I know there's an illegal precedent that we're setting in allowing forty feet, uh, but if we, let's say we allow forty feet on Lot Three and/or Five, is the next user that comes in this area going to ask for forty feet, and are we going to feel kind of inclined to say, you know, we have to kind of match that? And if we're okay with that, that's fine, um, but forty feet is tall, we've never done that.
To, just a response to your question. You can screen it with, with trees, and you're either doing some sort of spruce tree or a pine tree, something that's fast-growing. I would suggest spruce trees because they don't naturally limb themselves up like pine do. But spruce trees get to be really tall. So I would, I would say the screening from the Aurora Sports Complex side is not necessarily an issue. But I'd be inclined to vote yes if we could limit the restriction or li- limit the container that can be stacked to forty feet.
So rather than materials being allowed to go to forty feet, it would only be containers?
Uh, it, it's got to be some sort of, and I, I'm, that, that's what you and Laura are for, as far as to figure out the, the verbiage, but you know what I mean, it's some, some sort of container.
Contain storage.
Shipping container or metal container or something. An enclosed container. That, I think that those enclosed containers provide a little bit more stability, as opposed to something just being free stacked. And so there's a safety issue there as well, but.
Mr. Philip Chuck, how, how many containers would that be at forty feet?
Roughly four.
I'm sorry?
Roughly four.
Roughly four feet, or four of them.
You see the Burlington trains going by and they've got doubles on them, so, you know. You transport them safely by rail at the two stack.
Yeah, just forty feet are unknown to me is just, is the issue right now.
Well, if we, if we, if we were to clarify that, Trustee Betsinger, you'd, you'd be comfortable with it then if we, if we specified it to these, these, uh, these storage containers?
Certainly be more comfortable than I am right now.
Teresa Dan, thoughts?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with the enclosed storage container, that was the intent, and then if he finds a different user and they have a different need, they can always come back and, uh, ask us to change it.
And would you guys be okay?
I, I believe so, if, if we get a, if they don't come back, we get a different user and they need some outdoor storage and they need more height, and, you know, if it's different than the containers, then I guess we'd have to look at that again as a modification for a special use.
Not, not that I want to derail this, or, I, I don't want to put this off, because I know you have users for seven and eight, so I'm not looking to table this or anything unless, unless that's your request. Could it be a little bit broad in that the zoning administrator could approve a slight deviation from storage containers in the future? What I'm getting at is if, if, if this same user came back in tomorrow and they came under contract, Philip Chuck would have to go back through an amended, amended special use, a month-long process, which we do very quickly here, but still. Is there, i- is that possible?
So for clarification, are you asking something substantially similar to the shipping container or anything else? Because I think that's where the problem gets, you don't want to throw your zoning administrator not having enough guidance on what the board's intent is.
I see you're not wanting to answer that, yes.
Yes, I mean, I think substantially similar, I mean, we could all kind of agree that we don't want to be locked into a shipping container, and something very close to that comes in that we want to give the discretion for, but I think anything else, we probably do want them to come back.
Okay, or like contained, contained storage.
Storage or shipping container, because, you know, the concern is, is well, somebody comes in and says, I'm doing open rack.
Right?
Right? So, like, that's what I'm hearing, is if it's open rack storage, that can be problematic of forty feet outside. And I think that's what the problem to the plan commissioners had, too, was outside storage forty feet high with, uh, with open rack.
Mm-hmm. Does that sound agreeable?
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with, you know, again, some kind of a storage contain, contained storage.
Yeah.
Where it's, you know, something that's not, we're not stacking, uh, I, I recently was at a recycling center in Aurora, and magically the price of metal is down, so they're stockpiling, and it is easily thirty-five feet in the air. And I'm thinking to myself, I'm pretty sure their neighbors didn't plan on this when, when they knew they were moving in next door to them, so that's the concern, is things change, markets change, and all of a sudden, we've got a stack of scrap metal fifty feet high or thirty feet, you know? Because if it's forty, it's fifty. Yes, I'm good.
Okay. Would you, would the board be comfortable, um, taking action on this, um, and leaving that specific section subject to attorney review and work with the petitioner to substantially comply with what we're talking about here? Or do you want to strike it right here?
Nope, I'm, I'm good with that.
Okay.
Fine with that.
That works.
Yeah.
So is it the board's pleasure then, so it's an enclosed shipping or storage container or substantially similar as approved? Okay.
Yes.
That works. That was the only question I had on everything. Anything else?
Move to approve, subject to attorney review.
Go ahead.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Betsinger.
Yes.
Yes.
That carries five zero, thank you. Thank you, John. All right. Uh, moving on to the second item, um, for separate action today is a Resolution twenty twenty-one dash zero zero nine. Uh, that's adopting the revised employee manual. You guys talked about this at the last meeting, I'm trying to pull up my notes here real quick, if you, uh, sorry about this. Okay. So you talked about this at the last meeting, and Megan, see if you have any questions, uh, the three changes that have been made since that time stemmed from, from board comments. Uh, the first one would be, uh, the work from home language, as Trustee Guyer pointed out. It, it wasn't succinct and wasn't explicitly spelled out there, so that draft language was circulated, uh, via email to the board last week, that has been inserted. Uh, the other one is the village administrator's ability to enact changes to the HR manual. We wanted that to be limited to state and federal law changes, uh, with notification of the board, any sort of emergency stuff was also outlined in there. Anything beyond that would need to come, uh, through the process, uh, to the village board. And the last item was changes to the village's holidays, um, adding Martin Luther King and June nineteenth and removing the spring holiday that we, that we currently have. And those are the changes, any comments or questions for me or Megan?
I've just got one, I, I appreciate that, uh, staff did work on the language for the work from home, the revisions to manual. The problem resolution process, um, I still have heartburn over that, you know, the, the manual, we approved the manual, we trusted Jeff administers the manual, but he's the final say on any, uh, action in that process, so there's not really a formal, um, process that employees could go beyond Jeff. I know we have an informal process, which most of the trustees disagree with, because then we have employees going to trustees, um, and not following a process per se. So, um, that is the one thing that, um, that I was pretty adamant about adding to it, so that we have a formal process for the employees, and it doesn't happen often, I don't think it would happen often, but, you know, quite honestly, it could actually kind of help Jeff out, because, you know, if they went and we said, well, now that's the intent of the manual, you know, it's what Jeff said sticks, right? So, so that's the only comment I have, but I do appreciate that they worked on the other two, the work from home, the revisions to the manual.
It's funny that that gives you heartburn, because it gives me heartburn, thinking that somehow I would be in the middle of those, um, when I heard that on the tape. But I, I understand the approach there, and, um, I'm confident that Jeff is going to remedy those situations in kind of a way that we would see fit, um, and if not, you know, that'll certainly come up in his, in his review. Also not a huge fan of, you know, the informal process of, um, employees reaching out directly to this board when they should really stay in the chain, so. But thank you. Any other comments? Is there a motion?
So moved.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, call the roll.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
No.
Trustee Betsinger.
Yes.
And Trustee Guyer.
No.
All right, that carries three two. Thank you, appreciate it. All right, moving on, uh, item C this evening is Resolution twenty twenty-one dash zero zero eight, uh, to induce the redevelopment of certain property within the village, uh, or within the proposed redevelopment project area former Caterpillar site. Sonia.
Um, yes, as you know, the Reich brothers purchased the former.
Excuse me, Sonia, is your mic on?
It is, I can get closer, though.
Yes, please, thank you.
There we go.
Better.
Ah, okay. So as you know, the Reich brothers have purchased the Caterpillar property and, um, have petitioned for annexation into the village, and as part of that petition, they're requesting a TIF incentive to help with the redevelopment of that site. Back in April, you approved us moving forward with the TIF eligibility study with Tuscan Associates, and we've begun that process. And their preliminary report indicates that the Caterpillar plant site is eligible. Uh, the owner is requesting that the village enact a TIF inducement resolution to allow the owner to continue to go forward with their expenditures needed to meet the needs of their potential tenants on the campus. Once the resolution is adopted, any qualifying expenses incurred could be eligible for TIF funding if and when a TIF for the redevelopment project area is adopted and a redevelopment agreement is executed. You have a letter from them kind of outlining, uh, what the issues that they're coming across are and what the eligible expenses they think that they have. Again, this is not obligating you to anything at this time, it is still subject to going through that, um, TIF study and formalizing a TIF and obviously annexing the property. Thank you.
I have a question. Who determines the final, uh, eligibility, um, as far as work done, if it meets the TIF criteria?
Um, we will work on a redevelopment agreement that'll outline what is going to be an eligible expense or not, and that'll be subject to the board's review as well as our TIF attorney's review, um, and then specific ordinances will come before you for those, for those expenses.
Thank you.
And I should note that, uh, at least one or two board members has raised the question, it seems a bit early to do this. And one of the things that I failed to mention in one of my conversations was that when we were on the phone, uh, with the governor's office, the deputy governor, a couple of times, they had asked about this process and where we were at, and how quickly we could move things along, because that would be a tool for them as they were, uh, marketing the site, you know, we were in the running for, uh, a, a big, uh, manufacturer that went in another, uh, city in Illinois, I'm not sure that I'm supposed to say or not. So this, this would be one way for us to kind of get ahead of some of the other sites. And again, it's all pending several other ordinances and ultimately annexation. Before anything.
I touch on that topic, and I'll bring something up later in new and unfinished business, but I had a meeting with Keith Wheeler, um, last week about the widening of Route Thirty, and I expressed to him our concern about if this process goes forward, we create a TIF district, it's also going to bring in more vehicles, more trucks, those sorts of things, and our infrastructure right now, Thirty and Orchard can't handle it. And so the state needs to be aware that if they would want us to push this process along, they also need to push the process along for the widening of Route Thirty.
Good call.
So.
And I've, I've got a question, too, you talked about the redevelopment agreement, we have that, we have the annexation agreement, we have establishing a TIF district. Are all those going to be done at the same time tied together, or are we going to take them one at a time? I, I understand it can't make a TIF district until you annex, but I mean, this is going to be a package deal, a package agreement?
They will be in pretty short succession of each other, I would imagine.
So we'll, we'll have all the information for all of them when we make a decision, it's not that we're going to not know any one, three of those pieces of the puzzle when we make a decision.
Obviously, the first piece of the puzzle is going to be the annexation of the property, and then from there would become, would come the adoption of the TIF project area and that TIF, and then from there would be the redevelopment agreement after that.
Okay, and that's, that's the order, but we will know, we will know the terms of all three of those at annexation?
I can't say for certain, but I would imagine we'd have a pretty good idea, yes.
I would think that if I'm the user, if I'm the owner, and if I'm the village, I, nobody wants to get too far along until they know they have everything that they're getting, right?
Right.
We can't approve a TIF without annexing, they probably won't want to, they might not want to annex until they know that, you know, we're sort of agreeable on the TIF, so it may be, they may all be drafted up to be, um, tied together, in which they're all voted on, and one doesn't occur unless the other one occurs, kind of thing.
Yeah, and just in experience, I mean, it does become a bit of a chicken and an egg situation when you're in these negotiations, because, you know, of course, one side wants everything and the other side wants more information, so we do try to get as much as we can while accommodating, you know, the developers' needs as well. So certainly when something comes before you, if you have questions, you know, feel free, please throw them out there, um, you know, because it's in everyone's best interest to make sure that everyone has the same comfort level, so we can all move forward.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
I have a question. I mean, am I reading this correctly? That it's, that they paid $68,500,000 for the property and they're asking for $50 million in TIF funds?
They're not asking, they're saying they have $50 million in what they believe are eligible expenses.
And that would be.
We decide how much we're willing to give.
Which this does not indicate, right?
Right. That's the redevelopment agreement.
Attorney Julian, do, so, because we have already contracted with Tuscan and they are working on the study for eligibility, for a TIF eligibility. So then, do we know, are they waiting to get that back till that comes in or?
Are they waiting, I'm sorry, don't, are they waiting to get what piece back?
Are they waiting to annex until they get back that study that says whether or not it's eligible?
They, yeah, the TIF, they need, I'm sorry, I can't speak. Yes, yes.
So that's basically, we need to wait until that, till Tuscan comes back with a report that says, yeah, your name.
Oh no, I'm sorry, they need to annex before the TIF can be established. But yeah, Tuscan will give us whether or not it's eligible.
I think the petitioner's attorney is here. Would you come on down? I bet. Instead of us speaking for you, you could probably do a good job. Sorry about that.
You were all doing such a great job.
If you could just state your names for the record.
I can identify myself. My name is Bernard Citron. I'm with the law firm of Thompson Coburn, representing the Reich brothers, which is actually the owner underneath the Route 31, who is the actual owners of the property. We appreciate you taking the time today to look and discuss this matter. I think this is the first time formally. We've had that ability and we look forward to working in the future on all of these issues. I'm going to try to answer a couple of things all at the same time. Yes, we paid $68 million for the property. One of the reasons it's in effect that low is because of the condition of the property. I believe some people from the board was able to walk through the property. So the property is hopefully at the end worth a whole lot more than that after the money is put into it, which will be a combination of what we hope to be some TIF incentive. And again, that amount has not been discussed, although that we have shown that we have over $68 million, over $50 million in what we're putting into the property that could potentially be eligible. The reality is, is this property needs an intense amount of work. It was built many years ago. Some of the, some of those buildings are over 50 years old. There's a lot of issues with that that need to be revamped in order to get them leased. To just piggyback on what Mayor Broly indicated, we have tenants who are itching to get into this property, big tenants. Now unfortunately, you're right, we did lose out to a tenant. I truly believe that they were kind of using us as a negotiating, to using us and unfortunately Montgomery as a negotiating tool. But we have a couple of tenants who want to take entire buildings. That's well over a million, a million and a half square feet. But they need help or they want us to help them. We're putting out insane amounts of money to bring the buildings up to that. So we know pretty categorically, there's going to be a large employment opportunity there, which we do believe will help the city. In terms of answering or addressing the question, are we waiting? There is a lot of moving pieces there. We do have a petition for annexation that was officially filed with the village, so we are committed. We have filed the application for zoning on the property, a plan unit development. There's still some things that we're working out with staff who've been incredibly helpful on this and working through those items because we'll still have to have a hearing before the plan commission and then come to you. We are seeking a plan unit development for this to be able to accommodate. Because again, this project was built in some cases 50-plus years ago. It doesn't necessarily meet all the current ordinances, you know, on the property. So we need a little bit of, because I don't think you want us to move buildings if they don't meet the setback requirements because that's some of the things we have to do on this property. I will say ideally, it would all happen the same time. We'd love to be able to get annexation, well, actually it's annexation agreement because there is an annexation agreement, annexation zoning and a redevelopment agreement all at the same time. But it really depends on when your TIF consultant comes up with his report, when we can get it out there and how long it takes to negotiate at least a draft of a term sheet. I would expect that at minimum you'll see a term sheet at the same time, maybe not necessarily the redevelopment agreement because of all the steps that has to happen. But you'll see a term sheet that hopefully at least us and staff will have agreed to. So you'll know what the terms are. And you know, the term sheet really is the business terms. The redevelopment agreements have a whole lot of language that us lawyers put in whether it needs to be there or not to cover all those possibilities. But you'll see a term sheet before the property is annexed, which I think is for both benefit. I mean, I think it's important that we know what we're going through and that also the village of Montgomery knows what we're going through. With that, I can answer any further questions, but we're very excited over this project. Our client went ahead and I don't think that's a little amount of money. They wrote a check for $68 million without knowing much about what was going to happen with that process. So they're very committed to having this property redeveloped in a way that will be beneficial, yes for them, but also for the village.
Thank you. And I know we haven't stated this yet at this meeting, but I'm very excited at the prospect of, you know, annexation of the possibility of TIF and what that might look like responsibly. But just knowing that we have a partner who's invested in our area, whether you annex or not, what happens on the site is impactful to the village of Montgomery, Kendall County, the school where my kids go, that kind of thing. It's going to be a long-term impact and we're excited at their initial investment and the prospect of additional investment in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else for Bernard or staff? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Go ahead.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
And that carries five zero. Thank you, sir. All right, moving on to item D this evening is a word of a contract to Conley Excavating for the Wobonzie Creek, shared use path in the amount of $264,000. Director Wolf?
Yep. On June 23rd, we took bids for the shared use path for the Wobonzie Creek project. Recall, that's the path that we're going to construct along Wobonzie Creek from Virgil Gilman Trail to the library and then also connects to the sidewalk at Route 30. And we do have a grant that we received from Kendall County as well. So bids came in, we had a number of, we had seven bidders. The low bidder was Conley Excavating in the amount of $264,000. Engineer's estimate for the project was $360,507.70. We have worked with Conley Excavating on a number of projects in the village and they have been very competent and done good work for us. We are accordingly recommending, accepting their bid and awarding to the lowest responsible bidder, which is Conley Excavating in the amount of $264,000. So we appreciate a motion to approve.
Question. You mentioned that there was a grant as well. Are those grant funds included?
They're not.
Will they be used against this $264,000?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. Is there any concern with that bid coming in 30% lower basically than everybody else?
So anytime we get a bid that's a little bit lower than we expect, we do contact the contractor. And in this case, we did reach out to Conley, who we've, as I said, we've worked with before. And it's just so happened that they were in need of exactly this type of work to keep some of their crews busy. And so like a lot of times when we see this happening, it's a timing issue. It's just contractor needs work and he gets more aggressive in his bid. So we were just the recipient of, I guess, good timing in this particular project, so.
And when is this slated for construction?
Soon as we can process all the, you know.
This season?
Yeah.
Nowish.
Yep. Yeah, we have, hoping to have it substantially complete by fall and then, you know, complete restoration in the spring.
And I should say in regards to Kendall County, right? They've been very open and agreeable to the idea of contributing towards, you know, path connectivity. I've been working with them on a few things that not, they don't necessarily want to take the lead on these, but having us take the lead, we're paying probably the bulk of it, but they're happy to contribute towards it, understanding that it's good for the whole, so. All right.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Go ahead.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
And that carries five zero. Thank you. All right, item E, for one that we don't see very often, rejection of bids for well 14 and 15. Go ahead.
So during the pandemic, we went to 100% electronic bidding system for obvious reasons. And the system has worked quite well. Contractors really like it. It's been working well. Contractors have adapted to it. And so we've been pleased with the electronic bidding process. And when we've used it, it's been pretty flawless. Well, as we've come out of the pandemic now, on this 1415, it was our fault. We had a little bit of a miscue in that we had two contractors that were part of the electronic bidding process and one that had a paper copy. And the project manager, you know, issued an addendum that went out electronically, but the company that held the paper copy didn't get a copy of the addendum. So total clerical error on our part. We've since resolved it internally, so it won't happen again. But that's the reason now, and we spoke with the village attorney, and I think there, there was probably a path that we could have worked through it, but under her advice, we felt it was just better to reject the bid. We're not under a time constraint for this project. We've got plenty of time, so it's not time critical. We thought the safest and best way would be to reject the bids, re-advertise the project. So that's why we're here. Yeah, so sorry it happened. It was one of these things that, you know, it was just kind of an outcome of the pandemic in some respects, but, you know, we should have caught it and we didn't, so.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
No, it's okay.
Uh, yes.
Trustee Betzinger?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
All right, five zero. Thanks, Pete.
Thank you.
All right, item F this evening is a replacement of three police vehicles. Chief?
Well, thank you, Mr. President. Before you, as our, your request under our strategic plan to replace three vehicles, unfortunately, this is why I consent that agenda item C was moved to separate action item H. In this package we gave you, we were able to secure $15,000 in a grant fund. That will offset some of our costs for our cameras. In doing so, we missed the fine print that that check had to be written before July 1st. Trustee Guyer brought it to our attention, so we are just asking to pass that and then ask for the other funds to be distributed. Any questions?
Anything for the man with the badge? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Thanks, chief, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
And trustee Betzinger?
Yes.
That carries five zero. Thank you. All right, the last item for, well, the last original item for separate action, ordinance 1920, this is amending our village code creating a Class G liquor license for Taco Madre. This is waiver of first passage on the second reading. Attorney Julian, do you have anything to add?
No, just as everyone knows, Taco Madre did previously have the license and they didn't renew it, so now they're seeking to reinstate it.
Can you refresh me on what a G is?
That I believe is the general restaurant license.
Restaurant, not packaged?
No.
No, it's the 50.
General restaurant.
The normal.
Fifty percent?
Yeah, the 50.
Same one they had before. Okay, I.
We can look it up.
No, I just, I happen to have had a conversation with him Saturday and he told me he was getting a packaged liquor license. And that's why I want to clarify.
Yeah, I can assure you, he's not.
He doesn't think that he's getting packaged liquor. And he's not. Because he mentioned it to me and I, because I said, oh, you get your liquor license. He goes, oh, we're just getting our new one. I was on my way here to pick up my packet. And I thought, wait a minute, I don't think G is packaged liquor sales.
No, the request that was passed on to me was for a Class G license. So my understanding is that's what the village, the intake was. So I'm not aware that he requested a package, but this certainly does not grant a package.
Yeah, and it's, and it's not related to like COVID where we allowed people to do some margaritas to go type of stuff or, I just want to make sure that there's no confusion with the petitioner now as opposed to after the fact. Because he, I mean, he was pretty clear that he was getting packaged liquor sales.
Would we be able to approve this contingent on that communication being?
That that's actually what he wants?
Correct.
Yes.
Well, I mean, yeah, I guess, sure.
Because we don't want to have created.
Subject to confirming that that's what the application was in fact.
Because after the fact, then what would the mechanism be? If we were to approve this without that communication, can they surrender that license and then come back and petition for another license? How does that process work?
Yeah, I mean, they can request whatever licenses they want. The village, of course, doesn't have to grant anything. I mean, so if that was a condition of the villages, you surrender this to get this. I don't think in most cases, though, I think we've had them separate anyways. I mean, they might still want the Class G to serve onsite and then in addition just need a separate license.
For another license.
Okay.
I guess we could state it this way. We're granting a G, which is what he had before.
Right.
And if he wanted something else?
Come back.
He's only getting a G because you guys were very unequivocally not in support of a package and restaurant at the same location at the last meeting.
Yeah, and I'm guessing it's unlikely that he doesn't want the G component of it.
Yeah, the package.
I will assume that staff had it written down correctly.
Yeah, and again, when he said that to me, I thought to myself, boy, it's not what I think a G is.
Well, he's not going to get one of those, that's right.
Yeah.
Okay, so with that, and that'd be subject to that's what he really wants.
Subject to, you know, confirmation.
Second.
Go ahead.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Okay, that carries, thank you. All right, new item H for separate action accounts payable. So moved? As originally drafted.
Second.
Moved second. Any discussion? Call it off.
Marisak.
Trustee Marisak. Trustee Marisak. Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes. All right, that carries five zero. And I'm all for doing what we did with the police vehicles. Get that check cut, get it ready, realize fifteen thousand dollars in savings. Just in the future, let's put the accounts payable or receiv-, at the end of the consent. Problem solved. All right, moving on to our standing discussion that we have on fence heights for discussion tonight. Go ahead, Sonia.
Um, yes, at your last meeting, we had a resident come before you requesting that the board reconsider our fence height regulations, asking that the board consider going back to six feet in height or something else that would allow a six feet height in certain areas or under certain circumstances. So you asked me to provide some additional information on fence height regulations before you decide whether to move forward with a text amendment or not regarding fence heights. Provided you with some information, one of it including CMAP's initial review of our zoning ordinance, where they provided some recommendations, and that included that there's many parts of Montgomery that were designed to meet separate, more restrictive standards outlined in annexation agreements or homeowners association's covenants, and that annexation agreements do have an expiration. And so we have several that'll be expiring within the next four years. Based on this, they recommended changes to the code to ensure, quote unquote, "a soft landing" for these neighborhoods, to grandfather existing fences, however, create more context-specific fence neighbor, neighbors. So grandfathering would allow anybody within the village that has an existing six-foot fence to be able to maintain that fence. However, any new fences would need to meet the requirement, and our new requirement is a maximum of five feet.
And that includes replacing, correct? Replace, like if a huge part of their fence was damaged and they wanted to replace it, they don't get, they're no longer grandfathered, correct?
Yeah. So one of the purposes of regulating fences is the preservation of neighborhood character, and I think that's one of the reasons that staff and CMAP was looking at that five foot, which is kind of the in-between there, between the four foot that many of our annexation agreements have and the six foot that the code previously allowed for. So I did provide you with a subdivision map that kind of indicated the subdivisions that do have that four-foot height restriction and whether or not it was part of the annexation agreement or if there is an HOA that would be continuing on with that four-foot maximum. So you have that, some of that information for your reference. We also researched several of our surrounding areas, their fence regulations, and a majority of them allow a maximum six-foot tall fence. So I have a copy of that survey that's attached for your review. Some of the additional regulations do include a small setback from a corner side property line for that six-foot fence, so you wouldn't be able to put it directly on the property line, or they just don't allow a six-foot tall fence in a corner side property line. So it has to be a shorter fence or it has to be an open fence, something along those lines. Also provided you a copy of the survey that was conducted over the winter when we were going through the UDO process. This village-wide survey did include fences, and things that they were answering about were fence height preferences, considerations when purchasing a fence, and fence material preference. And sixty-eight percent of the respondents did say they preferred a maximum six-foot tall fence. And then you had about sixty-seven percent who said that their primary concerns were either privacy or pets when considering purchasing or putting in a fence. Additionally, you had eighty-seven percent of respondents preferring wood fences for residential fencing. So if the board would like to move back to allowing a six-foot fence, staff's primary concern would be six-foot tall fences in corner side yards. So I would recommend, if we wanted to run down that road, is that either only allowing a shorter fence in a corner side yard or requiring some sort of setback from that corner side lot line for that six-foot tall fence. Because if you are a neighbor facing the street and your neighbor faces the other street and you're there at a corner, and all of a sudden you have a six-foot fence all up in your front yard's business, you're not going to be a happy camper. And I've been in towns where I have been on the receiving end of having allowed said unhappy camping situation. So I can tell you, it's a real thing.
And no matter what we do here, you're probably going to still be in a similar situation.
Oh, this is true, yes.
Where folks are going to make that call. And I appreciated the conversation that you guys had at the last meeting with the resident that came and, you know, and again, I was yelling at my phone as I'm listening to this as she talks about her dog and jumping the fence. I have a four-foot fence. I also have a tiny dog, and she can jump my fence. So I didn't come to the village and ask to change the village-wide ordinance on fences, but I did put on a leash, which is annoying, but I continue to do that until one of you takes my dog from me as an adoption scenario. So, which I'm sure my family would be fine with. So having said that, I mean, it's really the pleasure of the board. I don't think in any scenario we're going to make all residents happy. I just remember the folks that have come over the last ten years, the one man we met that came, built the fence, the very nice cedar fence that we had him, I think, saw the top off of, right? In Foxmore Fairfield. Other folks that have had to comply, ordered the fence, put it in to change it to six, even to change it to five, whatnot. Nobody's going to be totally happy. What's the pleasure of the board?
Well, I have a couple of comments. So the initial really lengthy discussion happened in February. I was not at that meeting. And the conversation, I was a little surprised with how the conversation went. There was some free flow of comments that I was really surprised to hear, but basically, we knew if, you know, it was decided five foot, everyone sort of said they were in favor of five foot, except for Trustee Bowman was not on the board at that point. And it was pretty much accepted that, yeah, we're probably going to hear from people about going with the five-foot height. And I did mention that at the following meeting in March, and said I was really surprised with how that conversation went. I, I was in favor of a six-foot fence because we've had them in place before. Some people have them, some people want them, and I don't think it's right to allow them in certain areas that aren't under those agreements. And then, you know, the ones that are under the agreements clearly can't have them at this time. So to go to a shorter height, it just didn't make sense to me. And if you go and look at Home Depot or Lowe's or wherever you're going to get your fence, it's usually four-foot or six-foot fences. So the five-foot fence seemed really odd to me. I also wanted to point out, I had extensive conversation with the folks on social media, and I really appreciated Trustee Betzinger's comment about this wasn't a short process. Believe me, I stressed that to these folks, because they were accusing us of sneaking this under their radar. And I said, whoa, 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 nothing, nothing was snuck under the radar. First of all, government never works that fast, and second of all, this was a two-year process. So I was able to calm them down there, but the people that were in the situation where they didn't have those agreements, really, they were expressing they wanted the six-foot height, and they were feeling like we perhaps overstepped. And my concern is, I don't know that we are ever going to have conformity with fence height as these agreements expire. As they expire, some people may never replace a fence, or their fence may stay up, you know, for however more, more years, and they don't have to replace them, so it's not going to affect them. They're not going to know that they have that option. So we still could potentially have four-foot, five-foot, and six-foot fences in any one of our subdivisions as these agreements expire. Obviously, with HOA, that's not going to happen. So I, I am really in favor of allowing the six-foot fences. I think we've had enough people come in and say that they would be interested in having that. And I, I just have a problem. It just doesn't sit right with me to say someone who has had a six-foot fence, or they're in an area where maybe their neighbor has a six-foot fence, for us to say at this point, no, I'm sorry, you can't have it, but your neighbor two or three doors down has a six-foot fence. To me, that, that's a problem. And just a little bit of a side note, again, when I was having the conversations on social media, there was indications that it wasn't clear on our website, so I would like to have that looked at as well to make sure it is perfectly clear what, what is and is not allowed.
It's a confusing topic, that's for sure.
Yeah, so I think I've beat that enough, but, yeah.
So one comment that I would make, and I'm sure others have comments, is maybe go back, let's go back up to thirty thousand feet, and how do we got, how we got here? And why, and is this the vision for Montgomery? We don't want two Montgommerys. We don't want the new homes and the old homes.
Right.
Anybody who does not have a fence up currently, and primarily that would be in the older parts here, right? Hasn't put one up in the last hundred years. They haven't put up a six-foot, they might not put up a five-foot. So maybe we shouldn't regulate on the off chance that they might put up a fence. But if you go up to thirty thousand feet, what was the goal? The goal was, as we developed new master-planned communities on the west side of town, in Seasons Ridge, in, on the east side of town, newer subdivisions. The planning principle that we followed was a shorter fence height, whatever height that is, contributed to more of an open, you know, community feel. So we're in the middle of trying to encourage more resident, you know, communication, build a sense of community in Montgomery, and a six-foot fence, unless we're a tall community, doesn't do that, right? Even a five-foot, I'm out. So the, the thought that, is that still our goal? Is that what we want in town? Is, is, is to regulate fences, one, that's two questions. One is, do you want to have different rules for different people depending on where you live? Which I would argue against. And the second one is, do we want to abandon that planning principle and allow people to do six-foot fence anywhere that there's no regulations that you can't? There's plenty of people that, like I have an HOA, I couldn't do it. That's the policy question. It's not, you know, going from one height to another. It's, do we really want to keep fences a little bit lower? I know, like, Rose's family lives in an area where they have six-foot fences. He has it up, he's replacing it. I think he should have the right, he doesn't live in Montgomery, so. He should have the right to fix his fence, I think. He should be grandfathered if you're not drilling new holes or whatever it is. But at the same time, you don't see your neighbors. So it's more of a closed, you know, it's unincorporated, but more of a closed situation. I have a four-foot fence that my little dog can jump over. I see my neighbors. I know my neighbors. I talk to my neighbors.
So, but that's exactly my point, is I don't think that we should have different rules for different people. And I get what you're saying. You know, if you buy into a property and you have an HOA, you know there's rules. Folks that are buying into homes, maybe they buy into something, well, really, it could be anywhere. They may not know that there's an annexation agreement.
Right.
Before I sat here, I, I never even heard about that. I knew nothing about that. So my point is, because we've allowed it before, it's not like we haven't ever allowed this. And I, I might, I might feel differently if we had never allowed it before. But because of the fact that we have allowed it, and we have six-foot fences at, you know, at different points in, throughout, well, three areas, we know of three areas that we have them. That's why I have a problem with saying, no, you, you can't have them now. I think because we have some in place, we have to be able, for me, I think we should allow, because we have some in place, is where I'm going.
True, but I mean, we also have four-foot in place that, you know, we're required by agreements that we approved. So it goes, it goes both sides. You, you're, you're making the case for the fact that six-foot areas should retain six-foot areas, right? If you were in an area that was a lot of six-foot fence, why are we going on to five?
And as the things expire, if somebody is really paying attention, which was another thing that I suggested, people start watching meetings and coming to meetings so that they know what's happening in their villages. As things are coming up, if somebody wanted a six-foot fence, they should be allowed to do it. I mean, I, I, I get what you're saying about you want it to be open and there to be this some, some amount of conformity, but I don't know that every person in every neighborhood is saying, yeah, I want to be able to stroll on up to my fence and put my arm down and chat with my neighbor. Maybe I don't want them looking in at my yard or at my family or my kids or my daughter, whatever. You know, that's, you know, we're not going to have a hundred percent either way.
Totally.
But I.
It's not perfect.
Right, it's not perfect.
There will be no perfect way.
Absolutely.
Anybody who bought currently in any new subdivision, bought into some agreement they never read. Everybody who lives in downtown and, and, you know, in the older areas, bought into an area and probably didn't even think twice about what the fence regulations were, so.
Right.
So we should debate this at length. What, what would the board like to do?
Well, to piggyback on two, what Teresa said and what you said, when it comes to fencing, the only thing consistent, whilst of orchards, is the inconsistency. I've said it before and I'll say it again, turn off a Galena on Concord, drive all the way down Dixon, you're going to see every fence height, every fence type, and every fence style. I mean, some are board-on-board, some are doggy, or some are chain-linked, some are plastic. It's, it's, you know, the horses are all the barn, they're in the field, and we're trying to round them up right now. Because this UDO, the perfect time to establish this was when they started development out west. Every developer, every builder that came in, they had their own set of rules on how high they wanted fences. And, and it was allowed. The, you know, as far as Teresa's point, every time there was a UDO meeting, I shared that on social media to every subdivision in this community, including the Zoom meetings. And, you know, the first meeting was well-attended by both UDO committee members and some other residents. And then it just went down from there. The last Zoom meeting we had was literally me, Jared, Rich, CMAP. That was it. So, you know, people, they did not pay attention to what was going on. You know, I, when I built in my subdivision, I asked for a copy of the annexation agreement and the HOA and everything that was going to apply before I moved in. I did my due diligence before we built. I mean, you spend a lot of money, you're going to be there for a while, you should know what you're getting yourself into. Some of the concerns, too, people, you know, talk about coyotes. Well, unfortunately, a six-foot fence doesn't stop a coyote. A coyote can, from standing in position, can leap a six-foot fence without touching it. That's not a running start. And a running start, they can clear an eight-foot fence. And depending on the material, they can go higher than that. Chain-linked fences, they can scale. Twelve-foot-high chain-linked fences, up to fourteen-high, I watched video of these animals doing this. So it's not going to, it's not going to stop the coyotes in people's backyard. And I understand it's a concern for people, and I've brought that up in the past, but unfortunately, there's not a lot that we can do as a, as a village or as a board to, you know, control the coyote population in our village. I get all sides of it. I think the five-foot was a compromise. I used to live downtown here. I, I, the house I lived in, I had a six-foot fence. But it was because of the location of the house, close to, you know, industrial and commercial, I wanted a six-foot fence for privacy. The, you know, the side yard setback, what comes to question on that is, so if you want to do a side yard setback and you have a concern about a corner lot with a six-foot fence, well, what about those corner lots that are like on Concord? That on the other side is just open land or retention base, and there is not another house. So now do you make an exception for them? Because their side is not facing another person's house, where like, you know, my house is, is within a subdivision on a corner lot, and there's, you know, two or three houses across the street that would be looking at my side yard or a six-foot fence. But people on, you know, Simpson, Concord, Gordon, that's not the case for them. So do you make an exception that if there's not houses on your, I mean, it just starts getting into, you know, what, you know, how are you, how are you going to really administer this and meet the needs of people that, that want a six-foot fence? It's tough. The first UDO meeting, and the guy from CMAP, his name was Jared, he, you were at the first meeting, right? And I brought that up, when he said, what do you see the biggest challenge? I said, I see the biggest challenge is going to be fences. And he laughed, and he goes, wow. Never seen that before. And I go, well, welcome to Montgomery, my friend. You're going to see it. And that, and it's always been, you know, it's always been a concern, you know, of residents, because there's people downtown that, here in this area, that have six-foot fences, or their neighbors have six, and they don't like them. And they would rather have a shorter fence. It's, you're right, it's a no-win situation. No matter what you do, you're not going to make everybody happy.
So that's a, that's a good point, and maybe worth clarification, Sonia. Anybody who currently has a fence, and let's say it's like mine, and maybe a picket's missing, can they perform maintenance on their fence and they wouldn't need to like bring it into compliance? Let's say it's six-foot fence.
Yes. You can do maintenance, you can repair when we get to the point. Typically, when you're reading your non-conforming sections, it's when a structure is fifty percent or more damaged.
Got it.
It can't be replaced if it's not conforming. It has to be replaced conforming to the current code, so.
So if that was the, the resident concern, which wasn't the resident concern, it was that she lived on the west side of town, and I would, I guess I'm assuming is in an area that currently has a four-foot restriction and wants to be able to go to six eventually.
No, in her particular situation, the six-foot fences were allowed, and she has contracted a fence company.
Got it.
And she came in for the permit, and that's when we passed it, so it was changed.
Yeah, I get that. I forgot where I was going there. Go ahead, Steve.
I'm a rock solid on the five-foot, but I would be amicable with grandfathering the six-foot. Because if you had a six-foot.
Yeah.
And, and as opposed to doing something to work around and say, okay, my non-conforming, I'm not going to replace fifty, seventy percent of my fence, I'll do it in two sections. I'll do the half the yard, and then the next year I'll do the other half of the yard. If you have a six-foot fence, you're grandfathered, and you can have a six-foot. Because you're grandfathered, because how ridiculous would it be to have to tear it down and change it? So I would be okay with that if you had a six-foot, but I, I like the overall vision that the village had with the four-foot fence. I mean, I have a four-foot fence, I'm a subdivision. I like it. I get to visit my neighbors and stuff. I have been at people's homes that have six-foot. You wouldn't even know if your neighbor was in the yard.
You know what, a six-foot fence would not stop you from visiting with your neighbors. You know that.
Exactly.
I'm trampoline.
Hey, Matt.
Hello.
I get it, though.
So, I mean, I really do like the feel of the, the four-foot or five-foot even. Because I see the five-foot as a, and we have a neighbor across the street whose dog consistently climbs over the fence. You know, so now he had, I had a conversation with him, because it's a little bit of an aggressive dog, and said, you got to do something. And so he puts it on a leash now in the yard. So.
Or an invisible fence.
An invisible fence.
Yeah, or an invisible fence if you choose. I mean, there's options available to you. And you having a dog that'll jump a six, what happens if your dog jumps a six-foot fence? Now, we, now we should do eight. So I'm okay with grandfathering into people that have a six-foot fence to remain a six-foot fence, but I'm, I'm solid at the five-foot. I thought it was a reasonable compromise.
So I'm a five, he's a five. He doesn't want to be here talking about this.
Now, I was originally, you know, I, I agreed with Doug. And, but the subdivision that I live in, we have an HOA. We can't get people to vote on anything for an HOA, and it's automatically a no vote. If, if people don't show up, it's automatically, that, keep it the same. So we're never going to have six-foot fences. There's no way. I think it was an act of God to get it changed to forty-eight inches or whatever, fifty-four or whatever we have now. My thoughts on it, I didn't want it to look like a prison yard. And I, I liked the idea of the, the east, the west side of Montgomery and having the shorter fence sites. Because I'm like Doug, I talk to my neighbors, I get along with my neighbors. You know, I, we, we interact and we kids and you can see if the kids are out and that sort of thing. But if a majority of the, the people who have voted have said that they want six fence, six foot fences, I get it. But also, I'd be interested in knowing if a majority of the people who voted, are they either under an H O A? Are they under something that's going to restrict them even after their annexation agreement expires? You know, there are, I don't know how many subdivisions are on the west side that have a, an H O A still. But Orchard Prairie North is one of them. So you're looking, can you tell me?
So we've got.
Is it in there?
One, two, three, four that have HOAs that are still in place and would be enforcing a four foot.
Yeah, or whatever they've approved. So I get your, your points as far as, okay, if I live in the older section of Montgomery and I don't have a fence, my neighbor on either side has a six foot fence, now all of a sudden I'm allowed a five foot fence? That, that's silly. That, that doesn't make sense.
The good thing is you already have two six foot fences along the sides in that scenario.
That's fine. And I, I would just repair it slowly and it would be six foot boards. But, so I can be swayed towards the six foot movement. Because it's not going to affect me. We're stuck at four and a half.
Tom, I want to hear what your thoughts are on this. The, the one comment that I, I should make, just because we're just not saying it is, I think it's important that we allow all of our residents the opportunity to put up a fence that's of an adequate height to, to, you know, make them feel comfortable in the backyard and that kind of thing. The style of the fence, you know, I don't think we dictate, other than chain link fence, I don't believe you can do anymore. So people have that right to do that. We're, we're trying to limit this as, as little as possible so that we're ensuring that the community as a whole, you know, feels, feels good. So what do you think?
Remember, a lot of the discussions and frankly, for me, the folks like myself and many of you who live in neighborhoods who have additional restrictions outside of the village made that choice consciously. Consciously or unconsciously, you know, did you, did you, not. Those in the rest of the community, put up your six foot fence. I mean, there's a reason everyone around us allows six foot fence. There's a reason the majority of the survey respondents said six foot fence. Six foot fence. I, I just, I don't have an issue with it. I, I don't have an issue with it. If, if your neighborhood gets together and decides to disband your H O A and people start throwing up six foot fences, it's because they want six foot fences. I, I just, I, I, I'm more in line with, with, I think where Teresa's coming from, with those areas of the, the homes downtown, if you want to throw up a six foot fence, okay. And the neighborhoods who, who are operating under different rules, that's the choice of the folks who've moved into those neighborhoods is to operate under those different rules. And they have a mechanism to, to change those rules. Like Trust Youngerman said, I mean, it's really difficult to get 75% of your neighborhood to agree on free ice cream. Let alone changing significant, significant rules. I, I, I don't have an issue with, with, with going to six. I also am not going to jump up and down if we don't, so.
Trusty Betzinger just actually made me reconsider, sorry. Because again, it's your property. And to Trusty Brawley's point, if I moved in next door, you see how fast he wanted a six foot fence, right? I mean, because again, there, maybe it is neighborly and you do want to see your neighbors. Maybe your neighbor's not a person you really care to be around. Maybe you want your privacy for whatever reason. So maybe it isn't our job to regulate it. Cause again, if you choose to be the neighborly guy and you want to be, you put up a four foot fence. You, you have no fence. So maybe we are overstepping and regulating someone's personal property. Again, I bought in an H O A, I have a four foot fence, I'm fine with it. I like it. I like the fields in my neighborhood. But maybe regulating people's private property when they don't have an H O A regulating them is a little bit of a reach for us.
So, thank you for flip flopping. And that's fine. So the decision that we have tonight is we can maintain the status quo and move on. If we are not going to do that, there's a process that I would want to go through plan commission, follow a norm protocol. We're not just going to change it without them. It sounds like there's a majority of the board that's here tonight that wants to do that. That is supportive of taking yet another look and that's fine. So we'll do that. We'll queue that up for plan commission at whatever time. What might be helpful for that conversation is, because they'll have all this information and the best map I've ever seen. Is, no, she put it together the other day.
If you need 1117 paper, I can get you some.
No, it's, so what might be helpful is some insight from residents that would be impacted by this. Not mail out survey, not a whole thing like we did in Mayfield, but maybe if something in the newsletter that's like fences at Montgomery, whatever. Tell us what you think about six, four, you know, five, whatever. It might be a pain, it might not be. I'll let you decide and I won't impact you either way. The other thing to consider that we've never done before is having, I'm not sure if we can do this legally, so kick me if we can.
Cover your ears.
Is, is fence, like a fence district that says, these areas were built under this four foot and everybody's been building to it. These areas have never, we're going to keep these ones exactly the same. And when your H O, when your annexation agreement expires, you're still going to be held to that fence height. So now in my next door neighbor, let's say I didn't have an H O A. When Doug moves in, I can't put up a five foot fence or a six foot fence automatically. I still got to kind of meet, fit in with my community. Something to consider.
Yeah, and that was something that was discussed as part of the U D O review. And I, I mean, I could research it again, but I think when we started doing a little digging in it, it seemed like there were more concerns than it was worth at that time to pursue further. So again, if that's something the board wants us to revisit, we can. But I know that there was a lot of, a lot of pause the first time around when we considered that.
So.
In that, in that thing, Sonia, that you were writing notes down, just Mayor Brawley suggested with asking about fences dot com or whatever. A clear disclaimer that regardless, if you live in an H O A, your H O A is your rules. Because we, we have people that consistently don't understand. And they'll just decide, oh, well, the village is starting to put up a six foot fence and bam, they, you know, they come in for a permit. And I don't know that staff necessarily regulates the bylaws of the H O A. I could picture, we approve a six foot fence for Lakewood Creek and there's no six foot fence allowed. Now the guy put it up.
Yeah, well, so let me backtrack on my thoughts a little bit to make it.
We are aware of all of our HOAs and what their regulations are. Unless they randomly choose to change them and they don't let us know. So if you tell them, you have an H O A, you need to follow what their regulations.
Right, because the H O A is, you have to submit the H O A and they have to approve if you put up a fence. So the village issues a fence permit and cautions people. And if somebody puts up a fence in, in line with our rules, but it doesn't, is not aligned with the H O A rules, the village isn't going to say anything. It's the H O A that's going to take legal action against the resident.
Goes after them and starts to find them.
Then the H O A goes after them, like what the heck.
Because we don't police the H O A rules, correct? Yeah, so.
No, but I think it's nice that we communicate though.
Well, yeah, yeah, they do.
Because again, it's, it's great to say, well, it's really not our problem. Well, but we could have with a simple conversation stopped somebody from putting in a $25 fence that they didn't, they couldn't have.
And the billing department does that, issuing some permit, correct? They will tell people, well, you have an H O A and you need to submit your H O A. Because according to our records, your H O A does not allow this size fence or this type of fence. And if the people go, eh, I don't care what the H O A says and we issue them a permit. Well, then it's a fight between them and the H O A. So they are notified.
It has happened and people have.
A question though, because, and I know that there are certain fences in even our neighborhood that come past, I think fences are allowed to the back of the home, correct? And not, and not past the back of the home or something like that?
No, mine's, mine's probably five, six feet.
That might be an H O A thing.
Yeah, alright. So like in our H O A, they can, they have to be six feet behind the front of the house. This is far, they can't come right through the corner of the house. That's an H O A thing.
Ours, I think ours is different. It's to the back of the house, but okay. And, and I wasn't sure if that was a village ordinance that was, okay.
So let me backtrack on what I said just a little bit. Prior to approving the U D O less than six months ago, anybody, anybody that was not regulated by an H O A or an annexation agreement could do a six foot fence, right? So the, the plan commission reviewed and made a recommendation. Can we amend the U D O without going back to plan commission?
No, that's a text amendment, so it does have to go through the text amendment process, which requires a public hearing with the planning zoning commission and an ordinance adopting, adopted by you guys.
Cool. Right.
One of the things, and if residents are eventually watching this or, or hear about this or whatever, I want them to know that if they, they have, you know, we're not necessarily perfect. You know, we, we'll, we'll, we'll sit here and we'll talk about things and we'll, we'll make what is, we feel the best decision. And as time goes by and we realize that that doesn't necessarily work, we're willing to look at things and we're willing to, to kind of tweak things as, as we need to, so.
And this, I'm sorry.
Matt, did you say you wanted them to do a survey again? Did you, did somebody say that?
I'm not, let's see what staff comes up with. I don't want to dictate that because if it, it's going to be a bunch of work. And if the data we get isn't going to be helpful to plan commissioner of the board, then.
Well, and the, the one that was done, you know, that we have these results here, I mean, that was just thrown out there, I think on the, the village's Facebook page. I don't believe it was anything formal that went out to any specific area. So it, it was very, just kind of.
And I don't want to be pessimistic, but we know the response rate that we'll get and we'll have to dissect that and.
Right, that was my point that I was making too. Is that this was unofficial.
Yes.
There was no controls over it. We don't know who voted. We don't know how many times they voted. It, it was unofficial.
I also don't want to, and I should just state this, I'm not sure that I want to get in the process of making policy based on the limited response rate we get from public surveys or start to go out to public survey for every decision we make. Like we've been elected to make a decision, do the research, you know, if we go to six or five, whatever. And then deal with it when, when folks come in and make a compelling case as to why we should change it back. Sound good? We'll see you again. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, anything new or unfinished? Sid, you got something?
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Teresa.
I just wanted to ask Director Wolf to just thank our public work staff. I know they've been doing a lot of work and then we also sent a crew over to Woodridge to help out with the damage over there. So I just wanted you to pass that on to them, to thank them for all their hard work.
We'll definitely do that.
That's it.
And that's part of that agreement we have. What's, what's that called that municipalities have a?
It's the Ippeleman. So it's basically where municipalities can provide mutual aid to other municipalities in disaster events such as this.
I have six items.
I have to go to work tomorrow.
So first item, as I had hinted to earlier, I think late, middle of last week, we had a sit down meeting with our representative Keith Wheeler to talk about the widening of Route 30 from 40, from 31 to 47. And kind of what he's been doing and, and pushing to, to have happen. I think it was a productive meeting. We talked about a few other items as well. The, it looks as though the state is really waiting for this infrastructure bill that the, the US government is looking at, that President Biden's pushing. Once that happens, and according to the news, that's supposed to happen sometime relatively soon, they're trying to see what they can do about earmarking some of that money for that project. I had expressed to him our concerns about the, or the TIF over at CAT and the increased traffic and vehicle flow that that would create. I've explained to him the traffic accidents that we had and, and the, unfortunately, the, the deaths that we've had. One of the good things that if, if this is federally funded, the state has already completed the design process. Now we're waiting for the funding process. If it's completed federally, we don't have to go through that five year plan. It's almost essentially a shovel ready project, correct Pete? And so it, it was a good meeting. I had mentioned that, you know, I'd, I'd like to have meetings with him every couple of months. And maybe, you know, it, it alternates which trustees. But I think that he, he definitely hears us. And he goes through that intersection every day on the way to his office. So he's, he's working for us and he had presented a letter. I'd asked him, because I've, I've talked about it before, about going before other boards to get letters of, of support. And I asked him about that and the more people that we can get, and I'll, I'll go to, I'll have to put a suit on, but I'll have to go to other board meetings to get letters of support. I'll do that. I'll, I'll see what Metro West can do if they can give us a letter of support. And really now it's, it's about getting into the ears of either Foster or Underwood and making, making sure that they are, are working for us and getting those monies. That's item, well, and in addition to that item, literally three, three and a half hours after our meeting, Route 30 was closed because of a rollover accident. The second item, and I've talked to a couple of different village board members about this. The unmarked speed limit in Montgomery is 30 miles an hour. If a, if a, a road is unmarked, it's automatically 30. And with the trustees that I've spoken with, 30 miles an hour down the residential streets is just silly. It's un, irresponsible, quite honestly. And so I would, what I would like to do, and I'd talked to Jeff about it and I'd talked to the chief a little bit about it, was what is a process that we need to do in order to say, okay, the unmarked streets in the village aren't 30 anymore, they're 25. That slows traffic down, but it also allows citations. If someone's going 33, they're no longer going three over the posted, they're going eight. So it allows a citation to stick a little bit more. So, and then item number.
And I'm not going to cut you off, but could we add that, that process to a future meeting? I do want to see that process. Go ahead.
Item number three, and this is a public works item. We had discussed in previous years, when we're redoing the concrete sidewalks and curbs and stuff in front of people's driveways, that if we're doing their apron, we take out that whole apron and we're still doing that stupid little strip on either side where if you've got a snow shovel or something, it gets caught there. It's never going to seal the same as the rest of the driveway. It's never going to look the same. So why aren't we doing that whole apron area?
I know that you, I know that you brought that up. I don't know that we changed our policy on it. Obviously we didn't, otherwise we'd be doing it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't recall it.
I don't think anybody overruled you outside of a meeting. But that is entirely a policy decision of the board. I mean, technically we own that strip, right, of the apron? But that's probably three times as much asphalt that we currently replace. And it's probably just, the only reason we do it is a cost.
But what, what's the cost, what's, what's the square foot cost on asphalt?
It changes year to year. I, I don't have that number off the top of my head.
We can get that information. We did look at this, I know when it came up, I can't remember when, but it, it was basically a cost times how many of our driveways we're doing in a, in a year. So we can bring back the costs and you can, and talk about it.
It's not just the cost of the asphalt, right?
Well, it's the cost of the removal.
Removal and.
Yeah, we'll get the unit.
It's incremental, but.
Right. It, it's a policy decision, obviously. You know, that was the amount that was necessary to restore it so that it was functional. If we want to do something more than that, that's certainly acceptable. It's just up to you guys.
Let's, let's look at that and see.
Okay.
Item number four, I was down here, I think last weekend, when the first wedding was going on at Graves Mill. And there was also a Hispanic holiday or a Hispanic father, daughter dance going on at the B F W. And I just wanted to check out parking to see if there were any issues. The wedding was held outside. The wedding was held outside. It was awesome to see a lot of people down in this part of the village. Everyone looked like they were having a great time. I didn't see any real major parking issues. I haven't spoken with Graves Mill or VFW to see if there were any issues that haven't been brought up, but I wouldn't think so. Item number five, a resident had reached out to me and asked about garbage and recycling containers, and is there any sort of ordinance that restricts them being placed outside on the driveway and stored out there?
I am fairly certain they are not allowed to be stored in front of the house.
Okay, and apparently this other home is, so we can address that then. And then, number six, there's been a drone issue that has taken place in some of the subdivisions on the west side, and I had spoken with the chief about it, really bringing it up to Attorney Julian now. A resident has a certain right to privacy in their backyard, especially if they're using a pool or something like that. And the complaints that I've received, it's a drone that is flying and hovering over people who are either laying out or using their pool, or kids, or something like that. And the worst-case scenario, it's some kids being stupid. Or the best-case scenario, it's some kids being stupid. Worst-case scenario, it's something, you know, a sexual predator or something like that. What do we have, because drone is relatively new technology, and as some people had posted, is it restricted or governed by the FAA?
To some extent, I mean, it's very specific on what type of drone it is, you know, how high it's flying, et cetera. So, yes, to some extent, there are FAA regulations that are impacted. Yeah, in this particular case, I'd have to know very fact-specific, you know, whose property was it over? Which airspace was it in? You know, what kind of drone was it? I don't know if the village has any drone regulations on the books, I can't recall having passed them.
We can.
That's my question. If we're able to, what could we do? And if we're able to, what have other municipalities done?
Yeah, and the last time I looked at this was years ago, and I don't know if things have changed since then, so I would have to refresh my memory and see if we are allowed to do anything.
I do recall, no, I do recall from that time, because it might even be the same person in the neighborhood was flying directly over my deck in the back of my house. So I raised the question there or here, I can't remember. And we looked into it as the village and your office prepared a memo, and we could certainly pull that, update it.
Okay.
Because I'm curious as well, they're very obvious when a drone is flying, even if it's not over. That's the problem is, you may have a right in your airspace, more or less, but they don't even need to be over your property for them to be doing something mischievous. But it's very obvious that somebody is flying it and whatnot. It's kind of an odd feeling to have. It doesn't happen very often, but it will happen more and more.
So, those were my items. Thank you.
So the drones fall under something, like if your neighbor has a tree, and their tree is going over on your property, you have the right to cut that at the property line, but drones are different, if a drone is hovering over your property?
Yeah, generally, with trespass, I mean, you have a right to above and below to a certain extent, but then, once you start getting into airspace, you have different, you know, because obviously airplanes can fly above your property, and there's no, so there is a limit on that. And again, we had looked at this a couple years ago when drones were a little bit newer. I don't remember how long ago that was, but.
Maybe like five years.
Yes, I mean, things might have changed in the interim, so certainly I think it's worth refreshing, you know, what we had discovered previously, what may or may not have changed since then, and then determining what, if anything, the village wants to do.
And I felt like at the time, there wasn't anything we could do.
I don't, yeah, I don't remember that.
As a non-home rule, but, all right, thank you for sharing your six items.
I have one. I have one item, and it's really just more of an observation that I made. On Thursday, I happened to be stopping by the hall to drop something off for Christina, and while I was here, there was, happened to be a water main break right here on Mill Street. And I've never been to a water main, but I've done ride-alongs for Plowls, I've gone ride-alongs with the police department, so I walked over. Hopefully, I wasn't intrusive or anything, but as I was walking, I mean, there's four guys there working, you know, he's halfway up, his cab's in water, and they're bending pipes, and they're handing pipes to Mark, and he's bending them over his knee. I mean, again, the engineering behind it was very on-the-spot and get it fixed as quickly as possible. And as I'm walking away, I thought to myself, "It's 76 degrees. Imagine if it was 10, and that guy is standing down there in the water, and then having to get out and continue about his daily, his job." And I just wanted to recognize that the plight that Public Works goes through with all of these, you know, we hear, "Water main break, water main break, water main break," we don't think anything about it, but there's five guys out there, you know, covered in mud and water and dirt, and there's residents that lose water and boil orders and all that other stuff. But the reality is that, I just want, when we see this stuff, and it's December, these guys are out there slugging it for us and making sure that everything gets running again. So I just, again, it was just one of those aha moments for me to go and see it, and I was asking some questions and stuff, so it was interesting to see and observe, so thank you for letting me answer my questions.
Thank you. I'll definitely pass that appreciation along to our staff.
Should've gave them a shovel.
Yeah. It's worse when it's.
I had a bug out because my wife was texting me about dinner, so.
Well, it's worse than, you think it's nice in the summer because it's warm, but I've been on them before in the summer, and it's pouring down rain. And so imagine doing that pouring down rain, and the problem there is, is the rain runs off the road into the curb line and right into the hole with you. So, yeah.
I have another item.
Oh, you said six.
Sorry, over your limit.
Sorry, I was out of order, and I thought there were six, there's actually seven. On the corner of Fairfield Way and Shetland, on the northwest corner, that home has a street sign, right, on the corner of, in their lot, in their property, it's not on, it's not in the, the right-of-way? The street sign used to be on the, on the light pole, I believe. And it's no longer, it's a regular pole right in the corner of that lot. Can we get that changed?
Vandal's moved it on to private property when we weren't looking?
I'll have to look into that. That was probably changed during the course of the IRP program, and it may have been identified as non-conformant with MUTCD, so that could potentially be why it got changed, or it could just be.
Or remove that pole to the.
We'll definitely look at it. You said the northeast corner.
Northwest corner of Fairfield Way in Shetland.
All right. Anything else we aren't finished? Don't give you too much time.
I have another item. I'm joking.
I can tell. So, future meetings on here, since we are going to make some changes in here, I'll ask the board to approve that. We are going to likely add Intergovernmental on July 12th at 6:00 PM, and then you can see beautification is canceled, and then items F and G are just typos, honestly, they're left over from last month. So, with those changes, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Okay. We don't have executive session this evening, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Go ahead.
Trusty Youngerman?
Yes.
Trusty Marisack?
Yes.
Trusty Betzinger?
Yes.
Trusty Guyer?
Yes.
Trusty Spurley?
Yes.
Rejourn. Thank you.
Let me make sure, insert your question. Before we get our. So, no, I don't know what TSC does exactly.
What's that?
Is. So, we're studying, but with annexation, we're interested in seeing if we have the rights to.
I was trying to earlier, just.
I would hope that we would have the eligibility understanding prior to the annexation, but in any case, the annexation agreement is contingent on the TIF, because the TIF, but the TIF is not, you have to, until after the property is annexed. Because the property has to be in the village in order to establish the TIF on the property. So if there was the case. Yeah, the TIF is their deal, yeah, that is their, and we had. That was a point of contention in the annexation agreement, we're still, you know, going through the final draft. So we tried to open up the timeframe. To stay annexed, and then we have that property on the book, so the property, now they tried to connect between, we've gone through the whole original. So we tried to extend that timeframe, but of course, you know, so their whole purpose of the annexation is to get some sort of TIF help, and that property is so dilapidated. So that's what I was trying to say. I'm sorry, I don't know why, my brain just jumbled for a second. But, yeah, so, and then you'll see that language in the annexation agreement as it comes up. But I would hope that we would have the study or some sort of preliminary, like, understanding of the study prior to the annexation actually happening. Yeah, that would be helpful. Yeah. But, yeah, honestly, like, TSC does not like to consult with me at all, and they worked through, Kathy does all the TIF. Kathy Gilmore is the TIF attorney, so she does all the dark communications with TSC. So I'm not involved in like the day-to-day negotiation on what's actually happening with that study. But as far as the annexation and the timing of that, that's how we have worked out. We had to teach himself a new software. Hope that makes sense. Yes. Thank you. Have a good night. Oh, by the way, Morgan is really big. I meant to say when I saw her, which shouldn't surprise me, because his mom was really big, too.
She's 99% fat.
Oh, my gosh, I didn't even rock it, I mean, because I think last time I saw her, she was just such a little tot. I show my mom a picture of her.
Yeah, she takes after mom. She's got, I've been learning how to do hair, right? The last two days, I've been dropping her off now because my wife's back at the office. So I dropped Morgan off in the morning, and I've never done hair, right? You know, I'm 47 years old, I've never done, never done hair. And so the first time.